Starting, all attendees in listen-only mode.
Most people don't have one of those.
Yes.
And specifically for cutting.
Nice.
They go to Webinar.
Yeah, it came from the Ozarks somewhere. Steal your dollar city. Our silver dollar city, if you prefer what they call themselves.
I hope somebody has an issue with the silver plan.
What did you think you forgot?
I like this all.
You're just somewhere else.
There were a couple of things I could have had questions on, but it didn't seem like it was.
Yeah.
Final settlement, final, final.
What is the weird toe, are these?
Yeah, I was gonna go back on the final.
Well, this sounds like something that I need to. Access to our digital library of meditations, courses, and soundscapes. It's one of our benefits. Do you use the city insurance?
No, I wasn't able to.
We came in too late.
Well, Harold.
So this must not have been for. Just make us the only other thing.
Oh, and so you weren't able to do it because there would have been a continuation.
Some of it didn't exist.
Yes.
Just tell the tree board, no more pruning. Just let it all, let it all hang out.
But this is what it is. It's a modern hat. Focus on wellness. And I haven't used any of them because I'm super healthy, but I could use this stuff. I love this headline, too. Building emotional reserve through radical acceptance. That's where we are tonight, right? The election. It's gonna be what it's gonna be. But I am feeling apprehensive. I've been putting it off. Well, I was invited to a watch party. I'm like, no, I have to see the council. Thanks, though.
Yeah.
Call center previously, but I still have to dive through it. I just haven't.
Find our actual stuff.
Okay, I'll take a look at it, see how it's worded. Thank you, sir.
Can I have 6 o'clock? If everyone could please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Christie, could you take a roll call, please?
Sure. Cretelli?
Present.
Pappenforth?
Present.
Stevens?
Here.
Necrotto?
Yes, here.
Martin?
Here.
Fontana?
Here.
Mayor Shore?
Here.
Aquarum is present.
Great. Okay, and that brings us to the consent agenda. And it's a rather lengthy consent agenda this evening. And I don't want to point fingers at David, but a lot of his things, I think. But nonetheless, do we have any questions or comments on anything on the consent agenda this evening?
Mayor, I move to combine and approve the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Cretelli, seconded by Councilmember Pappenforth. The motion is to combine and approve the items on the consent agenda. Further discussion?
Stevens?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Necrotto?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great. And next up is citizen comment. This is an opportunity for the council to hear from our community. The public will be limited to three minutes each during comments. There'll be a clock on the screen. If anyone feels like they didn't get enough time, please feel free to reach out to me after the meeting. But I will hold everyone to the three minutes in the interest of fairness. While the council may not respond to your comment this evening, they may take it under advisement and circle back with the appropriate department for follow-up. And if necessary, the city administrator will correct the public record. And with that, I have Jim Wilson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council persons. I apologize, I will be leaving quickly. There's some kind of election watch things going on after this, so.
I've heard that.
I will be going to that. As Arnold Schwarzenegger would say, I'm back. I believe that Councilwoman Fontana filled you in a little bit on the history of Spiral Drive. And the city of Salida has utilized Tenderfoot S-Mountain Spiral Drive since 1922, as she shared with you, I'm sure, with vehicular traffic. And there's never been a problem with that. And it's been a cherished icon for Salida tourists and residents alike during that entire time. So I've talked with several folks in the community that are on board with opening Spiral Drive. And as it gets closer to the time that you're going to vote, as I understand it, it's going to be a little earlier in the spring, we'll make sure that those folks get that information to you. The city of Salida, in its efforts to be inclusive, which it should be, allowed the addition of mountain bike trails on S-Mountain. And it seems to be now that they're concerned about vehicles being there. And I don't believe it was intent, this council, for the bike trails to take over the mountain. I don't think that was intent. Salida Mountain Trails has asked to preserve car-free access to the area. Well, they're talking about preserving something that's only been in effect for a short time. And vehicular traffic's been going up and down there for over a century. And obviously, it should be the intent of the council to be totally inclusive in allowing all residents and tourists access to S-Mountain, not just one particular group. And I believe that any person that's walking, driving, cycling, whatever, should have access to Spiral Drive. It was built by the people, and it was built for the people. It's a fascinating story of the way that it was built and the number of people that participated in doing that. So there's a lot of history there, and a lot of those families that helped to build Spiral Drive still live, their ancestors still live here. I know some of you think I'm probably old enough to have been in on working on that original Spiral Drive in 1922, but that is not the case. And I have done a lot of thinking about the security piece. I bought a $150 trail camera. Cost me $15 a month to get the pictures sent from Kansas, on the family farm from Kansas. Immediate pictures on whoever's there and whatever's going on. In fact, one of those trail cameras helped me catch one of the people who were stealing political signs out of my front yard in 2016. Works amazing. So it won't be a big issue, and it won't be a high-cost issue to address that, I don't believe. And kids are gonna be kids. If you heard in the history, I don't know whether Councilwoman Fontana shared that back in the early 1900s, teenagers stole a bunch of flammable stuff and went up there and burned a bunch of trees. So if they're gonna do it, they're gonna do it. But I just believe that Spiral Drive should be open from Memorial Day to Labor Day during that time, 24/7. And that way, you don't have to worry about it. And if someone goes up there to mess it up, have a camera take their picture. Thank you very much for your time. And I appreciate it and look forward to visiting with you as it gets closer to voting.
Thank you, Jim. Okay.
We do have Adam Martinez on.
Okay, so Adam, can you hear us? Are you unmuted?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, okay. I have two things to discuss tonight. In essence, Dan said at the last meeting that he knows about the people from on the streets' frustration with the Almond property. And I would like to know something. When Mrs. Clark's house got burned, I would like to know, Dan, where were you? Because the police and the fire were out there. And where were you as the mayor before and after the incident with the house? Did you ever bother to call Mrs. Clark? Did you ever offer her sympathy or anything? And in essence, and the answer is no, because I feel that, in essence, it seems like it was a dereliction of duty. And then, in essence, and you should have been more caring and compassionate. And the city should have got on this from the very beginning, number one. Number two, I have a real problem with city elected officials being on the housing authority. We have Mayor Shore on it, and we have City Administrator Chris Dooms on it. And I don't think that it is good or transparent for our elected officials to be on any boards. We've been through it with Harold Casper, P.T. Woods, Dominic Nakarado, Jared McDonald, in essence. And we elect our city officials to serve at the pleasure of the city, not themselves, and not, in essence, and not be on these committees and boards. And it is not, and it is not right. And it makes people lose trust in our city officials. Now, I talked to Mrs. Marn today, and she was not very honest about it. She made an excuse for it. And in essence, and it seems like the mayor make excuses for a lot of people, like he did with Christie Dooms and, in essence, some other people. And especially when he says she was following her scope of work, which is not true. And in essence, and she is also on the Salida Community Foundation. And I think she should pick either two of these jobs or the city ministry position, and she can't have it all. And I would like the mayor to stop defending the obvious when we have somebody who is not present by the people. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone else? Okay. And next up, we have a proclamation declaring November 2024 Native American Heritage Month. Whereas Native American Heritage Month celebrates the accomplishments of the peoples who were the original inhabitants, explorers, stewards, and settlers of the land in the United States; and whereas the Native history of Colorado is an important part of the state's identity, and tribal people are still a strong and vibrant part of its culture; and whereas Native Americans have moving stories of tragedy, triumph, and perseverance that need to be shared with future generations; and whereas Native American individuals contribute to all areas of life in Colorado, including government, business, arts and sciences, medicine, education, law enforcement, and the military; and whereas the city of Salida is committed to equity and inclusion and recognizes that our community is better because of the diversity of our population; and whereas Native American Heritage Month is a time to celebrate the cultural traditions and proud ancestry of Native Americans and recognize the vital contributions they have made and continue to make. Now, therefore, the city of Salida does hereby proclaim November 2024 as Native American Heritage Month in the city of Salida. And next up, we have an amplified sound permit, and it is for the Veterans Day Parade and Ceremony. This is a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing and turn it over to staff to summarize their report.
Thank you. So we received an amplified sound permit from Dennis Hunter on behalf of the American Legion VFW Marine Corps League for the annual Veterans Day Ceremony to be held in Riverside Park on November 11th. Wow, that got really loud. Amplified sound permits between November 1st and May 1st need public hearing before the city council. And staff is recommending council approve the application for the amplified sound permit for the Veterans Day Ceremony in Riverside Park on November 11th. On their application, they had between the hours of 10:00 and 11:00. I added on here till noon, just in case it goes over. Answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions? You obviously addressed everything. Okay, we don't have an applicant present here. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Okay, no one signed up for the comment. No need for rebuttal. So I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing, which will take us to preliminary council discussion. And I just, before we begin, want everyone to know, if anyone is interested, they are meeting at 9:30 at Fourth and F for the parade to do the staging. I will be there, but if anyone else would like to be there or has the time to be there, just so that everybody knows. So with that, who would like to begin with the discussion?
I would like to say that I'm thrilled to see the veterans' parade back, going down its traditional route. So I'm very excited about it.
Traditions are important. Okay, I don't see anything else. So if there's nothing else, I would gladly entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve an amplified sound permit for the Veterans Day Parade and Ceremony to be held on November 11th, 2024, between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 12:00 p.m., followed by.
Second.
There you go.
I'm just reading away.
Yeah, you teed it up for them.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilmember Fontana, seconded by Councilmember Cretelli. And the motion is to approve an amplified sound permit for the Veterans Day Parade and Ceremony to be held on November 11th, 2024, between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 12:00 p.m. Further discussion?
Necrotto?
Yes.
Forrest?
Excuse me, yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, and that takes us to new business and Resolution 2024-67, a resolution of the city council of the city of Salida, Colorado, amending its employment agreement with city clerk Christie Jefferson. Yeah, it would probably be good if Christie Jefferson didn't take this one.
Allow me. Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2024-67 amends Christie Jefferson's employment contract. Christie was appointed by city council on March 5th, 2024. You held a six-month performance review on October 1st, 2024, which was very positive. We had a lot of conversation back and forth between the council and our city clerk. Christie has worked for the city for 23 and a half years. She has shown a significant commitment to our community and the city. Our employee handbook allocates PTO accrual up to 15 years of service, and then it kind of stops. And so Christie had asked for an amendment to her contract, increasing the amount of PTO hours, so paid time off, hours from 300 to 350 hours. And the council was amenable to that, the time. So we're bringing forward her contract with that simple amendment in there and asking for your action on that.
Questions? I would just say that, I mean, I think it's so important that we reward longevity and the resulting institutional memory that comes with it. And, I mean, this just makes so much sense to me. And then just the fact that, you know, it's a small department. And, you know, time off is important, especially when you've been around 23 and a half years. So this, to me, is a no-brainer, but.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
And I would say thanks to Christie for asking for this, because this enables you to stay at work when you're training, and it allows you to set your priorities without being punished with your time off. And so I'm very happy to see this move forward.
Thank you.
And therefore, I move to approve a resolution of the city council of the city of Salida, Colorado, amending its employment agreement with city clerk Christie Jefferson.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilmember Pappenforth, seconded by Councilmember Necrotto. And the motion is to approve a resolution of the city council of the city of Salida, Colorado, amending its employment agreement with city clerk Christie Jefferson. Further discussion?
Stevens?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Necrotto?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And next up is Resolution 2024-68, a resolution of the city council of the city of Salida, Colorado, approving citizen appointments to the Planning Commission pursuant to Section 2-7-10 of the Salida Municipal Code. Thanks, Bill.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I know that no one else has anything else going on this evening, so I'll take my time with this particular.
Linger.
Really make your time worth it this evening. Yes, and Planning Commission has recently had two vacancies, regular member vacancies come up. And so we went ahead and advertised for those vacancies between August 30th and final deadline of October 7th. We did extend the deadline at one point. We did receive a total of four applications for those two regular vacancies. This was the first time that we instituted a new type of interview process in which we put, instead of having city council do the interviews, we went ahead and put a committee together that consisted of two council members, two planning commission members, and one member of staff, Carolyn Poisson. So we took the four applications, and everybody was interviewed as part of that. Two of the applicants were existing alternates on the commission. And in the end, the recommendation was to appoint both of the alternates as the regular members, so both Dan Bush and Kenny Layton were recommended for the regular positions. And then Sarah Barris and Corey Riggs were recommended to fill their alternate positions on the board. There is a little bit of differentiation when it comes to the terms, because Michelle Walker did not elect to be reappointed, and therefore, her term had expired. So as you'll notice in the motion, Dan Bush's term will expire November 5th, 2028. Kenny Layton will be taking over the rest of the term due to the early resignation of Judith Dockery, so that goes through April 2021, 2027. And then both Sarah Barris and Corey Riggs will be filling the remainder of the terms for the two alternates themselves. So there is a recommended motion there in front of you, and I can take any questions that you might have.
Anyone have questions for Bill?
I have a quick one.
Yeah.
How many terms can you serve? You may have answered this before, but how many times, like, are you allowed to renew?
With Planning Commission, I actually don't recall if there are a number of term limits.
Wasn't, when P.T. was on, I believe he was on for, like, 10 years, forever?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not familiar with a specific number of terms.
There's no-term limits for planning commissioners.
Thank you, Chris.
And I don't even think that there's really, like, a re-interview process to maintain your seat on Planning's own. It's just kind of a role.
Yeah, generally, we just would bring the reappointment to you and get your feedback on that, instead of going through another interview process.
And it makes a lot of sense, because you think about what we're doing tonight. We're taking the two alternates who've spent, you know, the last year or so, learning the code, going to meetings, without the pressure of having to vote. And now they can step into that new role seamlessly, and then we bring two additional people on. So, you know, in a perfect world, you'd have people that would continue to roll who were engaged and committed to the process.
Is there any comments from you guys on the selection committee? Anything that you want to share or no?
I'm excited to see all this happen.
I like this process. It felt more thorough than when we were interviewing here. I just, and I think this is something that PROS did, where they brought forth recommendations to us, which I just think is a better practice, so.
Hey, saves us time, and I'm all about it.
Yeah. And everyone was really well-prepared and did an excellent job in the interviews, so. Yeah.
Awesome.
Would you like to move for this giant?
Read 1, 2, 3, and 4 out of this?
Oh, yeah.
This is like, this is like me doing a liquor licensing authority. It's wordy.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2024-68, resolution of the city council for the city of Salida, Colorado, approving the following appointments to the Planning Commission. Number one, appoint Dan Bush as regular member, term to expire November 5th, 2028, filling the vacancy left following the resignation of Michelle Walker. Number two, appoint Kenny Layton as a regular member, term to expire April 21, 2027, filling the vacancy left upon the early resignation of Judith Dockery. Number three, appoint Sarah Barris as an alternate member, term to expire February 15th, 2026, filling the vacancy left by Dan Bush. And number four, appoint Corey Riggs as an alternate member, term to expire February 15th, 2026, filling the vacancy left by Kenny Layton.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Cretelli, seconded by Councilmember Pappenforth. And the motion is to approve Resolution 2024-68, a resolution of the city council for the city of Salida, Colorado, approving the following appointments to the Planning Commission. Number one, appoint Dan Bush as a regular member, term to expire November 5th, 2028, filling the vacancy left following the resignation of Michelle Walker. Two, appoint Kenny Layton as a regular member, term to expire April 21st, 2027, filling the vacancy left upon the early resignation of Judith Dockery. Three, appoint Sarah Barris as an alternate member, term to expire February 15th, 2026, filling the vacancy left by Dan Bush. And four, appoint Corey Riggs as an alternate member, term to expire February 15th, 2026, filling the vacancy left by Kenny Layton. Further discussion?
Cretelli?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Necrotto?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And I'm just trying to get in the sense that people have other things to do tonight, because we're moving through this pretty darn quickly. But that takes us to our council reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Cretelli.
Nothing much, other than really enjoyed just some of these newer traditions that we have in Salida, like the parade for Dia de los Muertos. That was a very awesome cultural experience that I got to participate in first time this year. And then some older stuff, like Halloween just being awesome, Shed Fest, just seeing all those community members just reemerge from just the dust of a very busy tourism season. So it was just really good to catch up with everybody. And I hope everybody voted. Thanks.
Thanks. Councilmember Fontana? Councilmember Fontana?
I had quite a few positive comments on the farmer's market for the year, very positive. Everybody loved it, lots of participants, lots of vendors. And so congratulations to the farmer's market. Then the Shedfest, lots of positive comments coming through the store on that. And F Street, I did not go walk F Street, but I heard it was similar to the parades we have. People everywhere. So congratulations to whoever helped out with all of that with the city and blocking off the streets and all of that stuff. The only one comment I heard were there were still some cars coming down F Street. I wasn't down there. But hopefully, the cars can learn to not go down F Street and take the detour. But from what I heard, the activities were wonderful, even down at the park. And then I think that was all. I think that was my whole report.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, positive.
Councilmember Nakarado?
I wanted to comment on the request to keep S Mountain open and Spiral Drive open past the gate, and just some things that I've been thinking of. I'll try to be brief, because I know we're in a hurry. But I do have one story...
Take your time.
A short story. And I think that my dad and my uncle rolled a Jeep off Spiral Drive at one point, and it was a long time ago, maybe the '70s. I'm not even sure if they remember it, but I do remember hearing the story of them rolling a Jeep off the switchback before it goes into the spiral. So I have enjoyed driving up there myself plenty of times. And I just think that I would love to see this group move past that, just saying that it should be open because it always has been open. And look at what else has taken place on S Mountain, including the bike trails and the Mountain Heritage Park, which were both built with extensive fundraising from nonprofits in partnership with the city. There is an incredible view at Mountain Heritage Park. It's also a really nice park. So that's not to say that just fundraising as a nonprofit will give you that partnership with the city. I don't want to indicate that. I can't speak for Diesel on that situation. But what I'm not hearing from that group is, like, here's what we're going to do to organize and help fundraise for the costs of opening and closing the gate, the cost of maintaining the road, the cost of the erosion and increased safety that's needed up there in order to keep it open today. And so I just wanted to put that out there. Everything else that I'm seeing happen up there is happening with extensive fundraising and help and support being provided by that group that's requesting for it to happen. So would love to not, I just don't want to wait till next spring to make that point, so that if there's a chance for the group to get organized and start thinking about, you know, what those costs might be, because they might be pretty high. There's also housing below now, which I think is a pretty big factor for safety. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Martin?
Me? Sorry. Sorry.
There's the other Councilmember, right?
I normally go last, so I don't know.
Well, you know, they've changed it for the longest time, because you were, they had, but they've, it's been adjusted.
All right. I wanted to give another shout-out for the Oak Street and the 291. Just thank you so much to our Public Works Department for that. The streets look amazing. Ward 3, that whole area is really being developed so much. And so having bike lanes and sidewalks for those who need to use it is really incredible, and just thank you for that. And then, speaking of traffic and such, we, both Councilmember Papenfort and I, have been receiving still a lot of emails about speeding and people going through the yield signs and everything. And I just want to let everybody know that we are talking with our chief police, chief Johnson over here, sorry, working with our city administrator. They are doing an evaluation on D Street over by the post office to see if we can put in a stop sign. They are regularly maintaining that area and just, like, watching to see the traffic. And I just want everybody to know that that is on our radar, and we are trying to take care of that. So, thank you. That's it for me.
Okay, Councilmember Papenfort?
Nothing for me this evening, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Stevens?
I just wanted to, yeah, put a second to Councilperson Nakarado's about the S Mountain. You know, I think what, everything she said was, I'm right on track with myself. Just over the years of the maintenance up there, it just hasn't happened. And it's kind of just, you know, it's just not, not safe, and I don't think feasible for, you know, vehicle traffic up in that area unless, you know, a lot needs to be done for safety. And that's really all I had to go.
Thanks. Yeah, I just had a few things. I mean, first off, just given what's happening tonight, I would just ask people to remember that regardless of who you vote for, there are going to be other people in this community that have a different perspective, and a little kindness will go a long way. And I think that's one of the things that's great about this community, is that community feel. And it's okay to disagree on who you vote for. What's not okay is to be disagreeable about it. So I just wanted to put that out there. A couple other things. One, I wanted to make a shout-out to the Community Foundation. They presented at our work session last night. They've been helping us immensely the last few years. And we take 1% of city revenues and distribute it to local nonprofits who do so much good in the community. And I'm just really grateful for all the work they put into to make sure that money gets into deserving hands. So that was the second thing. The third is, we had a really interesting conversation last night in Devolution. I want to thank Public Works Director David Lady. And I also want to thank Citizen Eric Miller for his work in putting a lot of this together. And I would just say, you know, stay tuned on this one. We're going to continue to explore it, and it could be a really good thing for the community. So I just really appreciate all the work. And I love when we get citizen involvement like this, people coming to us with, you know, ideas on ways to improve the community. It's a lot easier to work with that than someone just coming up ranting and raving about something and not necessarily offering a solution. So I just wanted to extend my thanks to Mr. Miller for doing that. In regards to Spiral Drive, I heard what people said, and I think we have the next few months to gather more information. One of the things that I have heard is a willingness to look to other community members for things like the, there needs to be some work done on the concrete up there. So I will continue to have conversations this winter with folks and see what we can come up with. I mean, I hear everything that was said tonight, and I also, at the same time, see this as a tradition that if we should really try to honor. And, I mean, the community's been growing so, so rapidly, and there's been so much change, that tradition's become more important. So I'd love for the community, the council, to put our heads together and figure out, you know, a path forward on this one. And that's what I have for this evening. Do we have anything from the Treasury tonight?
Mr. Mayor, the Treasury doesn't have anything to report.
Okay, great. Do we have an attorney on tonight, or do we get anything from you?
Yes, you do. Yes, you do, and I have no report.
No report.
So there.
Okay. How about from the departments? Okay. Well, I guess other people must have something else to do this evening. So if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Have a good night, everybody.